Okay, we'd like to begin our meeting this evening with the pledge to the flag, please.
Our allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Hey, you'd like to begin with our minutes and operating statements from last month?
I'll make a motion that we approve June 2025 operating statements, June 16th 2025 council meeting minutes, July 14th 2025 work session minutes, and Quantum's financial statements for June 2025.
Second. A motion and a second, or any questions? Just let everybody know we have, Ellen is not, she's going to recuse herself and so is Tony because his wife is manager and Ellen lives there, so on that quantum, they won't be voting on that, so. All of those favorize?
Aye.
News, motions carried. Okay, okay, we'll go right to-
And council suggested in the future we split that out-
Yes.
So that they can vote on the councilman and he gets-
Got it, yeah. Okay, I'll mention that to Dawn.
Okay, next we have if I were mayor contest for the winners from this year from Elmer Wolf School and being Laura usually takes care of that, I'm gonna let you do this, Laura.
Oh, okay. I told her you were going to do that.
Don't mind, please.
She's not gonna read that, so, alright Savannah?
See, you're a little writing a lot better than I can.
She doesn't want to read, so.
Okay.
So Savannah wrote an essay for the local mayor at the contest. We had it number one every year and she was the winner of number one. We usually pick a winner from all the fourth graders and her essay was great. I'll present to you, it is a certificate of recognition. Savannah can say if I were mayor 2025 winner for the town of Union Bridge. You can find it on all of us. Here's a little pen for you. We also have a little record. If you ever need help, you can look it up. Thank you, congratulations.
Congratulations. And we would also like for you to come Tuesday evening up at the town square when we have the National Night Out, if you'll come up there and you can be Mr. Union Bridge that night, Mr. Mayor, okay?
August 5th from 6 to 8, if you'd like to attend and be mayor for the night.
Okay, so if you can make that, we would, it'd be your evening. Okay, we're gonna move things around a little bit here. Shaffer Miller, Hurf, Stacy Shaffer, have you come up and introduce yourself on the microphone, please?
Good evening, my name is Stacy Shaffer, I'm an attorney with Shaffer Miller and Hurf in Westminster. I'm representing a citizen of Union Bridge, Julie Kramer. Ms. Kramer could not be here tonight because she's participating in the Senior Olympics out in the Midwest, so I'm here on her behalf. I've had some conversations with Ms. Porter regarding a quitclaim deed. Ms. Kramer lives on Benidam Street, she is lot number four in block three of Benidam, and according to that old subdivision plat that's about circa 1864, there's some alleyways laid off in between her backing up to her house and the adjoining property that have never been utilized as public alleyways, never been maintained by the town or the county for that matter. And so Ms. Kramer would like to basically declare her half of the alley as part of her property, so that's how she came to my office, she got a survey done by Richard Krabs who has done survey work throughout the county, and just of that, her half of that alleyway. And so I've prepared a deed that I know Ms. Porter has a copy of. I do have copies for all the members, I also have copies of the original plat so that you can kind of get a visual.
Ms. Shaffer, do you have a copy of the survey that was completed?
I do, it's actually attached to the deed.
Wonderful.
And so the request that we'll be making tonight of the town would be that the town would sign off simply to quitclaim any interest that it might have had in those alleyways because of the way that plat is originally worded. And there's an explanation, if you read through the whereas paragraphs on the deed, it kind of talks you through-
Short line.
-how we get to that point. And on the plat, you can see I've marked, I've marked Ms. Kramer's lot, she's lot four and block three, and the alleyway is the, kind of the green line that's just there in between her and the next block.
Yeah, I knew there was some discussion on that a couple of years ago, she brought it up and-
Right, exactly. Apparently her rear neighbor had approached the council about doing a similar, a similar thing, but then did not follow, follow through with it. But she's interested in just acquiring that additional, you know, eight and a half or eight and a quarter foot area along that rear property line for her, and it would be in the form of essentially an add-on to her existing land. So it's got, as we in the county know, the magic language that it does not create a separate parcel in any way, it would just be added on to her existing lot.
And just for town council, that request from Ten in North Benidam, I believe, was back in November of 2023, and then there was a previous letter by the town completed in May of 1988 where the prior owners, I believe, had contacted the town about this, and the town stated that the alley has not been maintained and there is no visual indication that the alley exists. It is believed that the alley formerly served as a wagon road. The town has no present intention of paving or otherwise preparing the alley for public use. This letter was in response to a title issue that was created at that time, so I believe that was the position that we took with the previous request, is that that's what we stated on the record at the town meeting.
You keep saying it's to the rear of her property, but it's not, it's to the side of her property, I guess.
Yeah, they're-
Okay, I was just making sure we were talking about the same thing.
Right, right, yeah, it's along the edge.
Yes.
And you're just asking for half of the alley?
Correct, correct.
And if the other person ever wants to pursue it, they have to do the same thing Julie's doing.
Exactly.
So it'd be eight feet on each, eight feet cut down the middle?
Eight and a quarter.
Eight and a quarter.
Yeah, eight and a quarter. And I do have-
Well, the other property, that was Pavar's place, that has that encroachment on the alley anyhow.
I will, when Ms. Kramer comes back into town, my intention would be to hot take her mail.
Okay.
Whenever, you know, I don't know if the town would sign tonight or if they will take it under advisement, however that works, it's fine.
Okay.
I think for the town's consideration, maybe best to take it under advisement and we can discuss this.
Yes, we can discuss it at our work session or something and we'll get back with you after our work session meeting.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, we appreciate it.
And if no one has any additional questions, I'm going to be excused.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
You too.
I just wanted to clarify, they weren't trying to take the alley behind.
Yeah, no, no.
Behind.
We gotta have that one, yeah. Okay, going down to the mayor's report. Brett and I had a, I think a very, I think it was a successful sound, like it was successful partly anyway, with Maryland Department of Environment and the county, a couple of weeks ago here, reference to water and sewer projects and existing, talking about our sewer plant and we just have to wait and see what happens. It seemed like MDE is willing to work with us a little bit now, we'll see what happens and I guess it's gonna be a day by day and month by month, but we are gonna be building a new sewer plant whether that works out or not, because we have no other choice, right, Brett?
That's correct.
We have to do something, so we're hoping that they work with us on some low interest loans that we can, it can be modified at a later date if developments ever happen, but we're gonna have to do something for the existing town, so we'll see how that goes. I have a rather extensive report of what went on with different things that I did at Ocean City at the conference, starting, well, on a Saturday evening I had a meeting, actually a dinner meeting with some of the past presidents of MML and some of the other mayors, and we had a dinner meeting to discuss some matters that we were concerned about with MML, the future way MML seems like it's going, we had some concerns about that. And then on Sunday was registration at MML office or down at the convention center and they were collecting donations for child advocacy. I took donation in that wasn't actually from the town, but my wife and I gave a donation to that. And then we had, had just a couple of short sessions that afternoon trying to figure out what we were gonna do on Monday through the following week. There was a reception on Sunday evening in Ocean City that I attended. On Monday, the opening session was at 9:00 AM in the morning, and that was about an hour session, and then we went in, I went into Public Information Act and seemed like a lot of meetings that I went to, Tony was sitting in these meetings, he was sitting right up front, and so he could get full-
It's padded.
For everything, and some of the meetings I came in the back and went out, but mostly all the meetings this year, the rooms were packed, I mean, they were really full this year, I don't know why, but I think they must have had more registration this year than normal, but mostly every meeting I went to in the three days, you go in and there were hardly any seats, people were standing along the walls in the back, they were sitting on the floors, which is good, people were going and attending the meetings.
Too hot to go to the beach.
Yeah, well, yeah. And then, then also attended a meeting on how the state budget prepares towns and cities. Then on Monday at noon, there was just a Maryland Mayor's Associations, all the mayors had their luncheon, then that afternoon attended social media and free speech, that was kind of interesting to keep up with social media and free speech that people have and don't have. Tuesday morning, we went back in at 8:00 AM, had a meeting at 8:00 AM on Tuesday, election shape of our communities, then nine o'clock, we had the opening session with the governor to address us, that was very interesting. It was an hour spent that we visit, we went to anyway. I went and visited Expo with our exhibitors, and then at lunchtime, we had a past MML presidents, had a lunch, that was for about an hour and a half, I went to that, then we had the cabinet secretaries that we had, that was open, and I went to small, I went to Populations Forum for a little bit, then I had to leave that and go to this new committee that MML, that I was appointed to, is the new trustees committee for MML, so that they could go to 501(c)(3), and we have to have three or four meetings a year with the trustees, and the trustees are three of the past presidents of MML. And then we had the Banner City, went for that, and we had our final, this was on Tuesday, we had our final votes, we had Banner City, Admissible League, Hall of Fame, Lifetime Achievements Award, Employee of the Year Awards, and this year they had a closing reception on Tuesday evening, which was very nice, they had, I don't know why, they had a reception on Sunday evening, had one on Tuesday evening, and I guess the president this year didn't mind spending their money because they had some of the best food that they've ever had for MML conference, I mean, they had really, really good food, I wasn't that elaborate when I was present, I was kind of cheap with them, and, and, so, which I don't mind. This year they had a total of 60 different sessions, 250 exhibitors, like I said, the classrooms were full, the only problem I had was some of the sessions, I think they kind of like, you really couldn't get to some of them because they kind of overlapped a little bit, so you were gonna miss either a half an hour, maybe 45 minutes of some of your sessions, but the sessions were, all of them were very good this year. I just finished filming up my report last week and sending it in to the MML, but they did have some really good sessions this year, and hopefully though, next year they say it's gonna be better, so we'll find out, so. That's about all I have. We'll come to Mandy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. All right, American Tower has been pestering for Dawn. I'm joking, but they have reached out a couple times about an amendment to the lease. The amendment that they have requested is a right of first refusal language, which according to the file that I have on this, they attempted to put into the extension back in 2015, and I believe the town rejected this and had them take it out. The right of first refusal is about selling or leasing the property to third-party competitors only, it does not have to do with private citizens or businesses that have nothing to do with communications, it is strictly for third-party competitors. They are offering a $10,000 one-time signing bonus to agree to this, and essentially it says that if the town agrees to this, that they will first offer, if they decide to offer the land for sale or for lease to the tenant for 45 days, and then the tenant has 45 days to provide the landlord, which is the town, whether they elect to move forward with this or not. From my notes that I have reviewed, it looks like the town had a little bit of holdup on this because if there is an attractive offer from a third-party competitor, the town didn't want to have to deal with having to give the 45 days and then going back and forth, the town opted to not do that back in 2015. The language from what I can see is almost word for word what it was in 2015, they are just putting it back up for, you know, they're saying, hey, let's see if we can give them, you know, $10,000. Back then, I don't think that there was any negotiation for price on this because it came along with the extension of moving it to 2071, you know, so that was all negotiated at that point, and I don't really think that had any, they didn't offer anything more for including that or not. Now they're offering the additional $10,000 to the town. Of course, Mr. Lovejoy, he presented it to me like, oh, this is a no-brainer for the town, but again, there seemed to be some hang-up back in 2015, and again, I think it's because, you know, we don't know what could happen during this time, because this goes through the end of the lease, which is right now, 2071, that's a long time, but that is completely up to the town, I wanted to present that, I told Mr. Lovejoy I would present that to the town. Again, it's $10,000, it could be considered a no-brainer if the town wants to take it as that, but then you're stuck with it because it's gonna get recorded with Land Records.
Right. I think something we'll think about and discuss amongst ourselves a little bit before we jump on that bandwagon.
Right, and I can send the notes from back in 2015 that I have from John, also for town council to look at, they were confidential memos, that way Dawn doesn't have to pull it from the files.
Okay, good. Yeah, I think that'd be good. I see they're up there working now, they're putting up new equipment and things, they've already been up there for like the last three or four days, big cranes and stuff, adding new equipment, so.
Yep.
Good thing.
And like I said, they caught it, you know, Mr. Lovejoy caught it a no-brainer, which I'm sure if you're looking at it from their standpoint, it is.
Okay, yeah, we'll look at-
So I will, I will advise Mr. Lovejoy that the town has taken that again under advisement, and we will get back to him at a later date.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay, Deputy McGinnis.
I like it back there, I like it coming here. Real quick, because I have some little ones in the room, I just wanted to, I had a pretty busy month, but I just wanted to remind everybody that we have Camp of Cops Week each year. I was very lucky to be able to attend it this year, again, it was very eye-opening for me as well, I got to spend four days, so the camp is a 40-hour camp, and $75 a participant, and they spend the whole day with us. And each day we focus on different things in law enforcement, we had some bomb techs, we had the K9s, we had drone operators, we actually did archery and BB gun competitions, each and every day we work as a team and we do drill and ceremonies, so I was actually honored to be part of that again this year, four different groups, so I was actually paired up with the State's Attorneys Group because they needed to have a law enforcement presence on their group as well, and it was just, just a really fun, fun time. Actually, a few local residents in New Windsor sent their kids to the camp from Snyder Summit, and I got to get a rapport with them and talk to them and tell them, hey, I'm the community deputy for your area, and it's funny, one of the ones in the camp said, this one time I talked to a police officer, he told me this, I said, hey buddy, that was me, do you remember that? It was kind of a fun experience, but just wanted to remind everyone of that, we have a Camp of Cops Week every, every July, and sixth through eighth grade, you learn all about how to become a police officer and what it takes, and it's a very great camp that we have here in Carroll County.
How many kids they have this year? I know, did, every year it gets a little bit better.
Yeah, so we actually have a max, there was a little over 30 kids per group, granted, not all of them showed up, so, what's the math there, 30 times four?
120.
120.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, so somewhere around 120, 130, I think is our cap, and of course, of course it's first come, first served, we're kind of getting to the point, because we've had a few dropouts, that, you know, we're gonna call up a little bit more frequently if, because we have a couple days for the parents to go register and show up in person and then grab their belongings, if they don't show up to those, then we'll get the next person up and go from there, so we'll have like a waitlist in the future, I believe, but we're capped around 130, just to provide their services to the camp. We have Mission Barbecue coming to the camp on Friday, we have Raising Canes comes Wednesday, we have the Snowball Trucks, at least that's what we had this year, some, some years it changes, but it's, it's pretty nice because you can supplement the lunches for the kids as well, and they can actually, you know, have, have some good meals as well, so, yeah, it's a great, great camp, great opportunity here in Carroll County, I just wanted to remind local community about that, and look, look for it next year.
Good.
When it, when it's posted on our website and social media and everything else. But between June 16th and July 28th, 2025, the Carroll County Sheriff's Office received 49 calls for service in the town of Union Bridge, out of those calls for service, seven were found to be reportable. On 6/17/25 at 12:20 PM, a domestic violence was reported in the sheriff's lobby, the incident was found to be late-reported from East Elgar Street, case open pending charges. On 6/18/25 at 9:09 PM, sheriff's deputies responded to a violation of a protective order in the 100 block of Main Street, the subject was arrested based off evidence in investigation to include that this was a clear violation of an active protective order. On 6/27/25 at 10:53 AM, sheriff's deputies responded to South Main Street for a late-reported theft of an outdoor statue. Through an extensive investigation, a suspect was determined, and an application for a statement of charges documented is pending completion for service of charges. On 7/7/25 at 9:36 PM, a fraud was reported on East Elgar Street, roughly $6,000 were charged fraudulently to a debit card, this case is open pending further investigation. On 7/15/25 at 2:24 AM, an assault was reported on South Lightner Street, the victim advised that he was punched in the face one time by the suspect who knocked on his door just after 2:00 AM, the victim advised that he was familiar with the suspect, this case is open pending charges. On 7/18/25 at 11:35 PM, a suspicious vehicle was reported in the 200 block of East Elgar Street, a vehicle search was completed based on reasonable articulable suspicion as well as consent, the search yielded negative results in that case. On 7/25/25 at 7:53 PM, a check welfare was completed on North Main Street, both male and female on sight were found to be extremely intoxicated with a small children inside the residence. So over family members were contacted to care for the children while child protective services were notified, and that case is closed. There's been a couple trends in town, especially on Elgar Street, as you guys heard there, and most revolving around the same general area, so I don't know if I can have those conversations here in the, in upcoming weeks with you guys to see what we can do about that, but we'll, we'll, we'll address that as that goes, and then there's also some, some there on Farquhar Street continuing, so if you guys have any concerns, please let me know, and I'll be willing to accommodate those going forward.
I think we have to get the PIO request and stuff in, and then we can have, according to our ordinance, have our meetings.
Very good.
All right, thank you.
Great guys, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, public, or, see, committee reports, I'm gonna start out with Tony, put that in.
Start with me.
Come around.
A couple of things, the Stanballs projects, there originally were four, their proposals were given, it turned out, we ended up with six, there were two additional smaller projects that were added to the package, they've all been signed, from what I understand-
Yes.
-and submitted to Stanballs, I have not heard from Stanballs when these projects are going to begin, most of them are in kind of out-of-the-way places, so shouldn't affect traffic too much, with the exception of one up near the elementary school, which we'll work through when that one starts to come close by. Did receive a call about a sinkhole in the Buttersburg Alley next to Fort Angler Street, went down, found out the sinkhole was roughly 12 feet diameter, four feet deep, it turns out it was on private property and it did not affect the street, so we notified the landlord, we coned it off just in case so that nobody accidentally drove into it if they parked there, and went back two days later and it was filled, so we took the cones back and that seems to be finished now. I brought up during the work session that we had, I'd like to begin working on a project for an emergency management plan for Union Bridge, this was something I got from the MML conference, I have received emergency management plans from two towns of comparable size to Union Bridge, and that's something that we'll start working through eventually. The big one I did get was about a week ago, I got a call from the State Highway Department that they would like to do a project that apparently was started, at least the beginning planning stages, about 10 years ago, and then it was dropped. Apparently it's now back in the hands of someone else that would like to try to bring it back up again, basically what they want to do is at the intersection of Broadway and Main, the main intersection where the light is, they would like to upgrade the American with Disabilities Act equipment that is at the intersection, apparently there's been some changes to the ADA, which have some different requirements, they also would like to replace the lights in town to upgrade them to the new LEDs, rather, because they said the lights we have now are like 30 years old or something. But that it may impact some town property, and they just want to make sure that if they do this, that they put it back the way it originally was, and they had some questions about how they wanted the paving, they want to upgrade the crosswalk where the brick is right now, it'll be repainted, and some other things, so what I did was, he sent me a bunch of information, including just a super rough draft, it's a drawing, I told him that what we would do is I'd bring it up at the next work session, and that I would conference him in, so that way, and I'd put a package together for everybody here on the, on the council so that we could review it first, and then that way you guys can ask questions if there's anything, it didn't sound like there was anything crazy, it sounds like it's mostly an upgrade.
The new ADA laws and how handy that people can get to, and-
Yes. It does involve putting a new pole in each corner, it's a small pole, it's only six feet tall, but it's gonna require them to cut into the concrete and things like that, so they just want to make sure if they do it, that it doesn't mess up town property, so that'll be at the next work session, I'll have all that ready, and that is all I have.
Ellen?
Well, I attended the economic and community impact of outdoor recreation down at the work at the MML, which I found it very interesting, and then I also took the, what was it called? It was the political etiquette secrets learning, learning about decorum for public officials, and I'm working on that, and I don't have anything else.
Okay, Brett?
I don't have anything to say.
Okay, Laura?
We got some new Christmas banners at the end of June, and I attended the MML conference June 23rd to June 25th, we had, I had a meeting with Shriner Court residents regarding some concerns on July 7th, on July 9th I requested the PIA for June of 2025. I spoke, on July 14th, I spoke to a resident about some safety concerns near her home, and then I turned around and called Kevin and talked to him about it, that's when he was at Camp Cops, we had a short conversation about that. On, let's see, we had a free snow cone event on July 18th, then we served approximately 50 snow cones and received $3 in donations, which I put under Dawn's door. On July 22nd, I attended the Carroll County Downtown's meeting, and National Night Out will be Tuesday, August 5th, 2025, from 6 to 8 PM, Payload Rock Band will play again this year, we'll have a bounce house, free hot dogs, snow cones, popcorn, cotton candy. And so my MML report is, I attended on Monday morning the keynote speaker, who was Tim Schreiber, just for your information, I know that if you were there and you listened, you heard him, he said, people say he looks like a Kennedy, he is a Kennedy.
Yeah.
His last name is Schreiber, he is the third child of Eunice Kennedy Schreiber, so I thought that was kind of funny when he said that, and I was like, he looks, he definitely looks like a Kennedy, so. But he said a couple neat things during his speech, he said, get out of your head, we have normalized a cult- of your head. We have normalized a culture of contempt. We should treat people with dignity. I attended the Apocalypse Now: How the State Budget Prepares Cities for the End or Not. And they stated that H R U will not, I mean, H U R will not be cut for two years. I attended Trinity's Children, which was the man who came to our Drug Expo last year. I attended his little talk. I attended municipalities, social media, and the First Amendment. Perry, also, we attended the Circuit Rider Program.
Right.
I forgot to, I don't know if you said that, but you did that, too.
Yeah.
So we attended that, because Mike, Mike Reynolds is our Circuit Rider. So we attended that just to hear, you know, what's going to happen with that. I attended the Channeling Your Inner Leslie's, Leslie Nope class. One of the things she's, well, Leslie Nope quote that she said was, what I hear when I'm being yelled at is people caring really loudly at me. And she said, everyone needs love, love even when they call you at seven fifty in the morning. She had some cute lines she used. I attended the Tiny Towns Forum, and I attended the Social Media for Municipal Success. I think that's all. Yes, that's all.
Who's next?
A pretty easy month for me. I had two lights reported, or reported to me about being out. One of them's already been reported and fixed. The other one's in the process. So.
Okay. All right. Moving right along. Public comments and concerns. From the center. And I did forget to say that you guys had a very lovely day for your duck derby. Very well attended. A lot of people. Very hot down there that day. A lot of people. So it was, I thought it was a good day for you. You lucked out, considering the way the weather was in and out with all the rain.
I'm Sherri Thompson, here on behalf of Dream Big Union Bridge. And as Perry said, the duck derby was a huge success. We had to reschedule it because of the flooding. So I think that hurt us a little bit, maybe, maybe not. The heat definitely, I'm sure, had an effect on it. But everyone seemed to be having a good time. We didn't have any complaints. We had lots of new attendees who had never been to the duck derby. We were pulling visitors from all over the county and Pennsylvania. We got a lot of people from Woodbine this time, which was kind of interesting. The farmer's market, we're continuing every Saturday faithfully. It's slow, but everybody that I've talked to, we have one or two vendors. If we could get them all together at one time, we might have, you know, half a dozen or so. But what's been really rewarding about it is the support we've gotten from the community. There's a need, and they are supporting it. So trying to get out there and check that out. We will be doing, oh, the duck derby. I talked to Perry to make sure we could use the walking trail next year. It will be June sixth, two thousand twenty-six. So we're just going to start actively planning for that. Christmas in the Park will be held at, I don't know if you want to still call it Lehigh Park, or if you want to call it Hutterburg Park, but on eleven twenty-nine. We're going to do it on a Saturday this year, because it seems like on Friday, by the time people get home from work, I think, I think it's just easier for them to attend then. So we're going to kind of continue with our live nativity. And it's going to be a little bit different this year. We try to mix it up each year to keep the people coming and stuff like that.
What's the date on that again?
On the duck derby?
No, the, the.
Eleven twenty-nine.
Eleven twenty-nine.
It's a Saturday. It's a Saturday after Thanksgiving.
In time?
That's to be determined.
Gotcha.
We're going to be meeting, I think, this weekend about that. We've had a lot of requests for bulk trash pickup, and we're hoping to schedule another one, since the first one we did was such a huge success. However, we do need volunteers, and we need donations to help offset the cost of the roll-off dumpsters. Because the year we did it, we had two huge roll-off dumpsters, and then there's the fee to have it dumped. So we really need, you know, support and help with that. We had a good turnout the last time as far as help, but we need, obviously need more help. I think that's pretty much it. Laura, I had sent an email to you. I'm still waiting on a response. Hadn't heard back from you. So that's all we've got. We just keep on keeping on. So thank you.
Speaking about your bulk trash pickup, do you have an estimated cost of what it cost you last time to do that?
It cost us about, I think it was like fourteen hundred, just a couple of years, but it was around fourteen hundred. The guy cut us a really good deal on the roll-off dumpsters. But then, you know, then you, of course, they keep.
The fee when you go to the landfill.
Landfill fees.
I just think it's, I think it's a good idea if you want to do it, but I think that that's something that we did years ago as part of the town, and I hope that we never ever do it again, because a lot of the big items that people have, and they get sofas, mattresses, and stuff like that, you get them to deliver it. They'll take your old one for a couple of dollars. And we've got people around that just don't do it, and they got neighbors and stuff that have trucks. And it's, you guys about worked your butts off that day with your help getting it.
We did.
And people take advantage of it.
We did, but I don't, what we did, just, we didn't have any hitches, except for one woman. We didn't get her stuff that she had set out, because it was in the daily trash bins. And she yelled at us because she wanted us to throw her bins away. We, we know that. But other than that, everybody was very pleased. What we did is, we did it by, you had to make a reservation, number one. We told you to have everything out on the street by seven A M. And if it wasn't, it had to be street side, we weren't going to anybody's property. And it went like clockwork. I mean, and then any of the larger items, of course, Angela was going around picking up those kind of things. But all in all, you know, we only, we didn't have that many big items. So, but again, you had to tell us, you had to make a reservation, and then you had to follow up with, we wanted to know what you were going to have, so we could prepare, make sure we had enough dumpsters. And it went really well, and was obviously very appreciated. So if we can get help, we can do it. I, I'm not so good at helping anyone with things that, when it's hot out and lifting. So if anybody wants to help, we'd love to have the help.
Good luck with your project.
Oh, Sherri, I have your email here. I was going to try to talk to you tonight about it.
Okay, anyone else? Public comments and concerns?
I don't know. Is that guy here?
Uh.
I don't know. Don told me to make sure he.
Okay, we have, are you Ladiesburg Road Timothy?
Are you Tim Kelly?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Subject regarding the purchase of that piece of property down there, that little sliver. You'd like to come up and explain what you have.
Hi. Yes, my name is Tim Kelly. I'm sure many of you have heard my name already. So yeah, I'm the new resident off of forty-seven fourteen Ladiesburg. I'm very interested in seeing at least how far the process would go in terms of appraising the land that's just, that sliver between the property and what comes up against Union Bridge. So, and yeah, yeah, I look forward to working with you all.
Okay, I think, I think you had already talked to the attorney before the land was purchased, right?
I spoke to the real estate agent.
Yeah.
With, was it Mr. Wright?
Yes.
Wright, yeah.
Basically, it's going to be the same as what this other piece was. It's, it's up to you to have the survey. And then we had some issues with the, what was it? It was something underground down there.
Drywell, drywell.
Drywell or something.
Subject.
Yeah. But to transfer the land, we'll take care of that, if we do that. Yeah.
That is, part of the concern as well is where the drywall is, it's like right on, I guess what would be considered the property line. And I'll be honest, the whole reason that I'm interested in this is to just have a big fence for my dog, future dogs. That's it. Like, that's all this comes down to. And the idea of trying to figure out where the fence would go, it seemed as if it was right on that pipe. So it would either, you know, come in or be on the out. But even if it was on the out, it seemed as if that would be a brooch of your guys' land.
Right.
So I, yeah, wanted to try and do everything possible to have all the ducks in a row.
Sure. I think we're, you know, we're to the point that we really don't have a need for that piece there. So once the survey is done and stuff like that, bring it back.
I believe the town had discussed, there was a survey of what we believe to be the survey of the piece of property. I don't know if, is that the piece of property that you intend to win?
I, I believe so. There were about three different surveys that were done at some point.
Okay.
And it was a little, I guess, muddy at times to know exactly what was that man and what was not, because I guess one of the surveys was incorrect. But I believe, to answer the question, yes.
Okay. I believe that we have that information as far as how wide or what portion that is. I think the next step at this point is to have it appraised, which of course would be your responsibility.
Of course.
Which you have a document that you would have to sign with the town as far as the expenses and everything involved. So if that is what the town intends to afford with, then, you know, we can let Dawn know.
We're ready to, whenever you get that, bring it back to us, and we'll move on.
Okay. And this is also my first time owning a home. So in terms of the process itself, do I need to wait to hear from you all, or do I bring something forward to you? The actual appraisal?
No, we, we will contact the appraiser. There is a document or a form that you have to sign that you will be responsible for the cost, which Dawn, I believe, will have that. So I think, I'm not sure how Dawn does this. If she will reach out to Mr. Kelly once it is ready, and you can stop by the office to sign, I believe that is how it works.
Let me know what I got to do.
Right.
And Mr. Kelly, your phone number is at the top of this, the four one zero four eight seven one four seven zero?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So do we have a meets and bounds survey that we can use?
I believe we discussed that during the work session.
Yeah.
I believe.
It was on the paper.
When we were there. That was what we were using as far as the next step would be the appraisal of that piece of property.
That piece. So that's, that's the one we're going to use. Okay.
Yes.
Well, just, I mean, because we're telling him he has to do a survey, but obviously there's already one done, so.
Yeah, that, I was confused on that as well. Since there were multiple surveys, I still need to do another one. And I was hopeful to just dig up one of the ones.
Yeah, the one that we just had, you just had when you bought the property.
Yes, yes, sir.
There, there are pins there now for that.
I believe this is, this is the piece of property with the pins that we are discussing right here.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes. Okay. So, so you need to talk to Dawn McKeav, sign that document.
Okay.
And then we can move forward.
You said I could stop in the office at some time.
Yes.
She'll probably call you and let you know.
We'll get her to call you when, when she has.
When it's prepared.
Make, make sure she's back from being sick, okay?
Oh, okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thanks for coming. Okay, is there anything else for public comments and concerns? I know there's been a lot of discussion about our parking meters on Main Street. We, we've thought about this, because there's parking, parking in Union Bridge as a whole has always been a problem. And it goes back to, a lot of you guys weren't even around here back in the early eighties when Entertainment Line was in town. Entertainment Lines would come in, they'd take train rides Friday, Saturday, Sunday from down to railroad station. Had hundreds of people come to town. They'd get on the train. They would park all over town, everywhere. And when they got back off the train, they would run to their cars and get in their vehicles and leave town, and we never got a cent from them. And we never even got our amusement tax from the Entertainment Line that we were supposed to get. Parking is a problem when flood zone has crowds down there. We do, the town does benefit from flood zone being there, just to be, give everybody a little bit of, they put it on their Facebook. Two weeks ago, they always have their mini boat parade, and the funds go to Union Bridge and New Winter Fire Companies. Just to let you know, this year, from Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, took in forty-one thousand dollars in cash and split that between Union Bridge and New Winter Fire Companies. It was a good bit up. Last year was thirty-four thousand dollars. This year, it went up to forty-one thousand. So flood zone does benefit the town some. It helps our, support our fire company, because without that, I mean, the fire company would be out here having more, well, they have all kind of fundraisers anyway. But it does support us. The parking meters, we discussed for years and years, and we have a prepared statement here, parking meters will remain on Main Street to ensure that the convenience, short-term parking is available for customers visiting local businesses, which there's very few now, but we hope to get some back. By encouraging turnover, the meters help prevent long-term parking by residents and employees, making it easier for shoppers and visitors to find a spot and support our small-town economy. So the parking meters aren't going to stay. We've had all kinds of stuff saying we're going to have the place going to be swarming tonight with petitions to get rid of them. They were upset because Lita doesn't give a schedule of when she's going to come and check the parking meters. Well, that wouldn't make sense. You know, she pops in and out, and she takes care of them. And over the years, we've always had problems with people that live on Main Street. Everybody has off-street parking behind their place. They don't use it. And if we let everybody that lived on Main Street park in front of their houses because it was convenient to them, well, then when anybody comes to town, they wouldn't have any place to park, because the residents would be there. We did put some fifteen-minute meters on the street years ago, in front of the drugstore and Angelo's, up at the pizza shop. It works very well at the pharmacy. Does not work very well at the pizza shop, because they use it most of the time themselves. And the other problem is, and people know it, if you have handicap tags on your car, we have two-hour parking meters. You have handicap tags, but then, according to the state, you have twice the amount of time that you can park there. And people take advantage of it. Lehigh comes down with their sweeper. They sweep the streets, and people won't even move their cars, they can sweep the streets. And they're doing it as a free gratis to us, and we can put that toward some of our M D stuff that we have to do. Main Street, from where you turn the corner all the way up through Main Street, that is Route seventy-five, is a state highway. And according to the state highway, and Kevin can vouch for this, no emergency plan. Any vehicle sitting there, when they're plowing snow, can be towed away. And one of these days, I hope they start doing that, but those vehicles will not be towed to tucks. They're going to be towed far enough away that people's going to have, they're not going to tow them to me, because it'd be a conflict of interest. So it'd be tow trucks from out of town. One of these days, you're going to come down there when there's a snow plan and start picking up people's vehicles and towing them away. There's signs there, and we put it in the newsletter. It's a snow emergency plan. Nobody pays attention to it. It's just one of them things. We've had other requests for people in other parts of town wanting parking spaces in front of their houses. Well, I'm sorry, the street does not belong to you. The street belongs to the town. And, you know, even though you say you pay taxes to the middle of the road, my mom's house is down there, and she's right on Main Street, and they pay taxes to the middle of the state highway. She can't park out there in the middle of the highway. Nobody else can. But it's just one of those things, when you live in small towns and communities. I think it's, it's, it's a convenience for our customers, or for our patrons, for people that have businesses there. Hopefully, we're going to have some more businesses come to town on these vacant buildings. We're trying and working to try and get somebody in those places. We don't want to take the parking away from them. Five dollars is cheap. You go, I don't know what Tony Towns is now. I think they're, I don't know what Tony Towns' parking meters are now. I know Thermont's is ten dollars. For the ticket. Yeah, for the ticket. I'm not sure what the Tony Towns is anymore. I think theirs is like ten or twenty dollars. I don't know what it is. But theirs went up a good bit after they put the new meters in. But they will be, they will be remaining for customers so that they can get in and out of places, so.
And they are in effect from nine o'clock in the morning till six o'clock at night, Monday through Saturday, unless it's a federal holiday.
And Ellen does have permission. We did that last year. She does come out sometimes when there's illegal parking, cars parked in the wrong direction, stuff like that. Parked on yellow zones down by limbos. We have people that like to park in no parking zones down there on the yellow, where it's parked yellow. Makes it hard for traffic to get in and out. So when she's, when she does know that, she does come out and give tickets. And they are not five-dollar tickets. And I think she enjoys doing it.
No, really.
Okay. Is there anything else I might have missed here this evening? Okay. Our next work session will be August the eleventh. Our next council meeting will be August the twenty-fifth. And if there's nothing else, we're in line for adjournment.
I'll make a motion that we adjourn.
Second. Any questions? Hearing none. All those in favor, ayes?
Aye.
Those, motion's carried. We'll see you next month. Thank you.